So what inspired you to run for council?
I've been studying politics for almost twenty plus years. I've read the Constitution Act cover to cover, eighteen sixty seven, nineteen eighty two. I read laws, you know, I'm, you know, I'm one of these people that likes to read, learn, you know, and not go and. You know, just take things for granted because in understanding how a system works, you have to understand how the details work. You know, and how much time and energy and teamwork there is in actually going and. You know, working to get good resolutions for the community, right? It's just not, you know, one person going ahead, it's a team. So, I mean, I'm one of these people, I am a team player, but I always choose my teams carefully. Because I don't wanna be on the wrong side of the team, you know, or the wrong team as it were, you know.
Yes, where did you study, uh, politics and whatnot?
Self-study. See, reading and learning and uh, and understanding yourself, you see, the problem with going to schools, they tell you what to, what they want you to learn. And they don't go into the finite details, and I'm a finite detail kinda guy. I like to know, okay, if this happens, how's that gonna work? You know, and if we're doing this, why are we doing this? Right? I mean, when, you know, I follow federal politics, provincial politics, local politics, it's kinda like a full-time job in a way.
So outside of your, your personal studies in politics, what previous experience or. Qualifications do you have for the role of a city councillor?
Like most people, none. I mean, I've ran for mayor and ran for council, I've, you know. Basically, uh, you know, I read the laws, like the B C, the Local Governments Act. You know, how the system is designed, how it's supposed to operate, you know, the bottlenecks that are written into law that hamstring. Municipalities and cities for funding and all the rest of the stuff. I, I just, I self-learn, I talk to people that are in it. That have dealt with it before, that understand this stuff and have taken the time to explain it to me. You know, I mean, you see, the problem with, you know, you know, one of the things people figure, oh, get an education, get a, get a bachelor's in political science. It, it doesn't prepare you to understand the finite details and coming in with understanding the finite details of how systems work. Gives you a better understanding of how to work toward better resolutions.
And in your opinion, what are some key issues the community has to address?
Uh, well, water and sewer is the key issue right now. Um, the system is getting old. Pipes need to be replaced, we're looking at about fifty million dollars approximately for upgrading the system, that's kinda maybe coming out of tax dollars. We have uh, forty-three million, I think it is, from the federal government that's supposed to come to us, but that's in jeopardy. So if that fails, that's another forty-three million dollars we have to deal with. And if they decide that they wanna upgrade the water uh, treatment plant and sewer standards in the next five years. Then we'll have to go and build a new one of those too, for another five to ten, fifteen, twenty million, right? So all of these things are adding up very quickly. That we have to take a look at. We have the two eighty-six project that's coming in. We have several other reserves that are, the other reserve in the area that's looking at expanding and putting in buildings in there. We have. You know, Bill Vanderzam and his property, and that's all looking at being connected into our current water and sewer system, so we have to look ahead.
And how will you address these issues if you're elected?
I will be addressing them, you know, as the best we can to try to find ways to get funding for the province. Because currently they have us uh, going write proposals to go and ask for grants and money and so forth. Instead of actually arbitrarily going and saying, okay, we're gonna give communities uh, and cities and regional districts. One percent of the P S T of all business sales within, you know, that's one percent of the seven, that is. Uh, it to, you know, to come back to help deal with your infrastructure issues, right? But the province would rather have us. Beg and ask permission so they keep us on financial starvation.
And in your opinion, what are some key issues you've identified with how the city has been run by current and previous councils?
I mean, previous councils, I mean, they had a lot of issues that they dealt with in their day and. You know, it's like the last council, we didn't really expect the flood and. When, you know, from what I understand, when I talked to one of the councillors about a lot of information around that flood, it was like. Everyone saw things going on, all of a sudden, things happened, you know, and it happened so fast that we were in shock. You know, so we were trying to do the best we could with what we had. You know, and this is just unfortunately how the previous council got voted out because of a lot of anger. I mean, Adam was the only uh, council that remained and everyone else was filtered out from mayor and five, you know, four councillors. You know, and it's, it was a, a good election, it was interesting. You know, the current council is trying to address the outstanding issues with water and sewer, this is why we have uh, the road upside down, you know. I mean, they're trying to address the fact that um, we're a growing town and the water and sewer infrastructure was not designed. For the population growth that we currently are seeing in the area, so we're trying to get ahead of the game and that costs money. So the council is working on the issues, you know, I mean, I'm. I'm one that wants to go and look at uh, how we can go and get our current venues, also going and generating enough income. So that they can meet or exceed the expenses of these venues, like the hockey rink, the compost facility, the civic center. Uh, and anywhere else that we have that generate income, so it doesn't come out of our tax dollars. That would then go and put in extra money into our tag, into our budget. That we could go reallocate to going and dealing with the water and sewer issues. I mean, the compost facility generated seventy-five thousand in income, it cost us three hundred thousand, you know.
And uh, your, your website states, quote, I believe that we must stand up to resolve the problems using any means conventional and unconventional. That are within the boundaries of the law. Can you elaborate on those means?
Well, the unconventional is like unconventional thinking, right? You know, I'm not saying that we go and start going just arbitrarily doing our own thing. And just saying to the federal or provincial government, now we're gonna ignore the local government act and the heck with you. No, we're not doing that. It's like the unconventional is. Working within the current system and the confines and unconventional is trying to find new ways for the government to. The, our local governments and our provincial government, instead of being at odds with each other, start working together as a team. I know it sounds unconventional to a lot of people, they, well, don't they? No, they don't, right? They, they have set up the system in a way where we're. Like I said before, that we have to keep asking for money if they would, the unconventional thinking is, let's just give the municipalities the money. Instead of going and, you know, instead of making them beg, so it's like, for example. I was talking to a councillor and they said, well, we spent twenty thousand dollars on a proposal to get three hundred thousand. Well, that's a cost benefit, great, but that twenty thousand dollars, you know, could have been better spent, right? So unconventional thinking is where I'm looking at. This is where the central use facility comes in. And the different ideas of trying to go and use, you know, some unconventional way to get where we're at or what we need to do. Including working with private industry or private, you know, corporations, whatever is required. To get to a better result, for example, water and sewer or, you know, upgrading buildings so that we're. You know, having a better experience in these buildings, et cetera. You know, it's just, I'm looking at ways to go and have income. Coming into the city, so we're not costing taxpayers dollars.
And what are some of these unconventional strategies? Do you have some examples?
Well, the central use facility, you know, it's a fifty million dollar idea, right? Approximately, could be shorter, you know, and that includes like going, cause we just still have the hockey, uh, team. My god, I thought that when I first saw the announcement yesterday, I thought they were gone for good. I was, I was almost in tears. I was like, oh no.
Yeah, me too.
I was like, oh god, no, 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 because, you know, I would like to see, you know, like with the idea of a central use facility. We can put better sound system in, we can use it as a concert venue, we can go and update it for uh. You know, have the wood planks you put down over the ice, for example, to be able to use it for other facilities. Just, you know, like for example, we've got curling, you know, we've got, you know, all these buildings that are all over the place, that are all aging. So I'm looking at the unconventional idea of what would it cost to save us money for tax dollars on the other side? And the unconventional thinking, the conventional thinking says, no, we should wait until the buildings start falling apart. I'm saying, what we should do is start looking at the curve of expenses. When the expenses go up, we need to go and take a look at replacing it before it gets out of hand, right? And so to me, that's unconventional. Right? Because conventional says, let's take it to the end of life, right? So that's where I'm looking at the unconventional things. Is if we start now, we do these things now, then later, sooner than later. Because if we upgrade, you know, we build a building, we're using heat pumps to heat the place, solar, wind on the building. Emergency diesel generator, et cetera, et cetera, to be able to go like L E D lighting in the building. You know, that's thirty percent less power, and if it's powered by solar, that even reduces our costs even more for going in powering the building. Right? So to me, I'm looking at every aspect of unconventional ways to go and reduce our costs. Of keeping these facilities going and keeping it, keeping, and having a central place where people wanna go.
And uh, where would you put this building if elected?
Um, I'm looking at Central Park currently, um, unless there's a better place to put it. But because, you know, we have multiple uh, baseball diamonds, they rarely are being used. Except for maybe what, five times a year, you know, maybe a week if that, where it's in full use. Um, we have the, uh, the other park, the one beside the river that did get flooded, that they will be fixing up. That could also be, it's got soccer, you know, we've got soccer uh, things there, but we could also go and put in, I don't know, we've got. You know, put in the uh, baseball diamonds over there too, right? I'm just looking at different ways to go and move things so we can get more things. The possibility of a baseball diamond with seats outside in bleachers, so people can sit in a covered area as part of the central use facility, you know.
So how big would this facility be though? You mentioned a lot of different needs and facilities and different uses for this building.
Um, I mean, I'm putting the civic center, the pool, the curling rink, the hockey arena. And talking about with the T N R D about the library being put in there. And maybe the museums possibly, you know, three, four, maybe five stories. You know, I know it sounds ridiculous for a lot of people to think, oh, well, we're not expanding, but we have to pay attention to the two eighty-six project. And they're talking about building housing over there as well, and a lot of it. So if we get another five thousand people and there's no venues for people to really go to, or they're starting to get old and costing us more than we can. Generate income, we need to take a look at, you know, absolute options, you know? I mean, I'm looking, you know, when I look at this, it's like, I'm trying to look ahead of the curve. Right? And everything to me is about looking ahead of the curve instead of trying to be at the curve and having to turn right away.
How will you uh, upgrade the sewage and water treatment? You mentioned capturing methane, are you able to elaborate on those points?
Uh, for the water, it's okay, for the water and sewer plant, um, currently, our current system just releases the methane into the air. And to me, what I would like, you know, because methane can be up converted to pure hydrogen, I know it's a little extra cost, however. Then we can use uh, the idea of solid oxide fuel cells, I don't know if you've heard of them, from Blue Energy and other companies.
Now, what are they?
Um, basically, they are, I mean, basically, the uh. Been so long since I looked at the prospectus for these things, basically, they conferred uh, to electricity. From using an adder-on diode and, you know, it's basically like how we, uh, for. For hydrogen systems, it's the same idea for using the membrane and all the rest of that stuff. It's basically the same thing. You know, and the idea of the heat that it puts off, we can capture that to boil the water for steam to generate power. Right? As, you know, because to me, it's like, even if this was, this side of it was dealt with. From, with Fortis or somebody else, right? It would be an idea to. Be part of the, you know, renewable energy programs, you know, and to me, I mean, I, I'm looking at the idea of. Trying to have as much little waste as possible, you know, that we can renew. I mean, another thing I was looking at was um. Paralysis plant, the possibility of bringing that to town to uh, turn uh. Plastics into gasoline and diesel, which by the way, a lot of people don't know, actually burn a lot cleaner than the diesel and gas from the pump that we get. So in, you know, even though it'd be still burning diesel and gas, it'd be burning much cleaner. So that would be another way that we could be offsetting the cost of our recycling uh, program. Instead of dropping it all the way out to there, uh, you know, for in Lower Nicola, I had the dump there. And using it to go and generate, you know, finding way for it, like selling it to generate income. From offsetting costs. So I'm looking at all angles of ways and means and possibilities. You know, because a lot of people have looked at the log and understand that we should come back, but it's not going to, so we have to look to the future of seeing what we can do. Plastics are not gonna go away anytime soon, unfortunately, right? The plastics are here to stay, I mean. You know, look at how much plastic we have in front of us here, as it were, you know, you know, and. You take a look at your products at home and how much plastic you just have for your TV, right? And just that and your electronics and so on and so forth, the plastics don't go away. So, you know, until we, you know, get Star Trek, we have to go and look at mitigation. And, you know, and even if there's still too much plastic, we couldn't get to the paralysis plant, we could go and look at seeing about, you know. Having that transporter, you know, built, bringing in a full recycling plant to bring, make plastic benches, chairs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You know, because that will generate local jobs. So I'm looking at ways to generate good, high-paying local jobs that can come to town. Where people make at least between forty to eighty to a hundred and twenty to two hundred thousand dollars a year.
And where would uh, this plastic plant be?
Well, I'm looking at Toko, the old Toko site as one of the places, but we have to do uh, stability testing before we could even consider it. Because, and there's remediation that has to be done, and they haven't bothered because they don't want to go and incur the costs. So, I mean, and this is what industry seems to do, is they ignore it as long as they possibly can. And then they go and say, oh, well, we're just gonna abandon the property, give it back to the city, for example, and say it's all yours, right? So now it becomes part of the taxpayer problem, right? And so, you know. The city's looking at this current situation over there as well and trying to figure out how they can deal with that. You know, we're trying to deal with, you know, we have a lot of vacant land in town that's just sitting vacant, that nobody's using. And I, you know, the plant is fairly big, from what I've seen, but it's not that big, right? So, I mean, it's not like we can put it in the middle of downtown, it has to go to the industrial area. And there's a fairly large industrial area that, you know, uh, you know, outside of that, that we could also put it in.
And um, you mentioned electric buses in your twenty twenty-two uh, platform. How much, how many buses do you think you would be able to get in to the city's uh, transportation system?
Well. Either we could go with hybrid, which is, and that's where the paralysis plant comes in. Is if we're going to send them plastic, we'd like, hey, can we get uh, some diesel and gas for our vehicles for the city? Which would lower our costs to, uh, you know, for going maintaining our city fleet. But the buses I was looking at run on ultracapacitors and they are from China, however, you know, um. It, it, the idea is, they can go, I think it's fifty miles or fifty kilometers, which doesn't seem like much, but. A lot of people don't understand with battery technology versus ultracapacitors, ultracapacitors, when you hit the brakes, they can go and take that energy right in. And scoop it right up, whereas a battery, it can only take so much before it starts to heat up. So I'm looking at the benefits of the current technology and looking at whether or not the technology is actually, you know, advancing. And even if it had a secondary battery in it, it would extend the range, so, you know, we don't know. You know, right now, a current electric bus from North America costs about, I think it's a million two, a million to a million five or so for a city bus. And that means that, you know, you can only go so long on a battery bus before you actually have to charge it. So with this type of infrastructure, you just pull in underneath, you put up the uh, the connectors, charge the bus, five minutes later, you're back on the road.
I'm just looking at my notes here, um, that it's, I have written down ninety kilometers an hour for that bus and uh, what, what is an ultracapacitor?
Okay, an ultracapacitor um, is basic, is kind of like a battery, but it's not a battery. Um, and it operates, you know, it has the ability to charge extremely fast. Whereas, for example, if you're, well, you know, your car, you gotta plug it in eight, twelve hours on a regular charge. But the batteries on an electric bus, you know, you can only run for so long, then you gotta take it off the road and charge it, right? So that goes and disrupts the, the current paradigm of being environmentally friendly. When the bus has to sit for eight to twelve hours to charge, then you have to bring a diesel bus back out to fill the spot, right? So, I mean, I'm trying to figure out a way so I could just connect it to the connectors, charge five minutes, is on the road, right? And the next morning, you take it out, charge it, and you can keep going. So because we're also expanding the bus routes. And to the two eighty-six project, we'll be getting multiple bus stops, that's been talked about already. So the idea is the bus could go from one end, have a charger at one end, have a charger at the other end. We work with the local First Nations for bus service out, out of town, so we could see what we could do with that for, with them. And so it's like having a single, even if it was just one bus that just did the main route and went back and forth to. Shuttle peoples while the other buses kept their road. I mean, I'm trying to combine the ideas of technology with like the paralysis plant to not have to pay for diesel and gas. You know, lowering our costs for diesel and gas, cause it's quite expensive for the city to keep all of our equipment running, you know? Um, so, I mean, I'm just looking at ways to reduce our costs while generating income and solving problems. You know, all, all along the side.
Sorry, just gotta quickly, we're good. Um, yeah, so. On the topic of transportation infrastructure, there are currently three bus routes in Merritt. Um, would you uh, push to have more bus routes?
Um, I would look for a bus route, if for, once the two eighty-six project gets going, is a bus route that would run from. Lower Nicola, stop in downtown and be able to go all the way up to the two eighty-six project back and forth. Because there are gonna be a lot of people that do live in Lower Nicola that are probably end up being working up at the two eighty-six project. So I'm trying to be as convenient as possible. The current routes that we currently have, um. Because of the three buses, by eliminating Lower, Lower Nick with a new bus, that bus could possibly be reassigned to add more local service. See, one of the problems we have being such a small town is you're trying to accommodate so many areas at once, and that makes the routes longer. And by shortening the routes, we'd be able to provide a faster service. So I'm trying to look at all the options and it, it's, it's always a catch twenty-two when you're looking at every option and. You know, even the idea of my bus might be an absolute failure, and I acknowledge that, right? And I'm not gonna say, okay, this is the best idea, it's an idea. I mean, I'm one of these people, I'll throw things at the dark board and see what sticks, and if it gets pulled out and thrown on the floor, so be it. I'm not gonna be angry about it, it's the way what life works. So that's politics, right?
So uh, you have a lot of big ideas on uh, your twenty twenty-two platform, some of those you've, you've talked about. If you're elected, since like you said, you can't really do everything all at once, um, what would your priorities be?
Well, I mean, I would, you know, one of the things I would like to see is the current compost to start generating enough income to pay for itself. You know, which I mentioned in my platform, is the idea of green bins to upgrade the quality of the dirt that's processed there. Um, and then bagging it, so people, you know, don't have to get a truckload, they just, they want a couple of bags, here you go. You know, or if they want a pallet full, I mean, there's, there's a way, you know, I'm just looking at conventional and unconventional ways to go. Get the money happening, so people would wanna go and buy the product, right? I mean. So going down there to go and get dirt or have it delivered i- is fairly expensive, and it's a large amount that has to be delivered. Right? So, I mean, if you just wanted a pallet of bags, that'd be, you know, fine and dandy. So, I mean, I'm just trying to get things to generate income.
What are some other future proofing plans that uh, you have that we might not have covered or, or on your website?
Um, one of the things I was looking at, uh, that was on my plan was uh, getting people to start ripping up parts of the lawn for gardening. Right? Um, and then use, and getting people to put in uh, like either weeping systems or uh. What are they called? Those little nozzles that point directly at the plants, the mystery systems. Instead of just putting a big sprinkler that just goes back and forth and in the wind, half of it goes to your neighbor's yard anyways. So it's like, I'm trying to figure out ways to go and search, sure that we can conserve water, because right now, we're already on a level three alert, right? And we went to level five last year. And by adding more people into the city, we're gonna have to go and upgrade the amount of uh, wells that we currently have. And we're gonna have to add more wells, and we're already going into the aquifer quite a bit. You know, we do have a lake that we could go and possibly take a look at, however, the province is gonna go and get. Little and quite iffy on that, and I realized, yeah, it would be a good idea, however. You know, you can't just go and destroy a stream and a fish hatchery area as well, unless you go and solve that problem somewhere else, so it was. So we gotta figure out ways to mitigate water, which is why I was looking at upgrading the complete water and sewers. Plant to include water, water reclamation to the point of where it's quality safe drinking water again without any. Leftover toxins previously, including, you know, things, you know, a lot of people don't understand that, you know, there's a lot of stuff that goes in there that. There's some things that they don't perfectly clean out. So I'm looking at the idea is, we need to restart reclaiming water. That, that we use. I mean, if they can do it on the space station, why can't we do it on Earth? You know, I'm like, come on, people, you know, we all know that water is gonna be a thing where, we're gonna get to the point where either A. We have to go and start draining the oceans to get water, or B, we have to go and start going and getting extremely serious. About water reclamation, to the point of where, you know, we're recycling up to, to, you know, eighty percent of the water that goes into the sewer system. Through convent, you know, through the latest conventional and environmental means, so we have to go and take a look at future proofing. You know, so that's where I'm looking at the water and sewer system as a big issue, I mean. You know, because there's only so much water in the aquifer, they are, you know, so that's a big concern right now. And if the aquifer dries up, well, there goes Merritt. You know, that's a big concern.
So I wanted to focus a bit more on you, you uh, mentioned that you are uh. Student of politics and history, uh, what are some lessons that you've learned from those studies that you think you could apply in city council?
Don't get angry, don't take it personal. And you know, I mean, a lot of people take politics personally, and I've seen how people just, you know. We know that the House of Commons is Hollywood, right? But a lot of people. Go and see the Hollywood and think it's all personal, and no, it's just politics, right? And to me, it's like, not getting angry is an important thing, you know? Sometimes just walking away and going, okay, you know, we don't need a break from this, we're still getting a little heated, folks, let's take an interim. You know, let's take a break here, get some air, and come back in, right? And, you know, to me, it's like. You know, I, you know, understanding the cycle of anger and knowing when to stop yourself before you get to three. You know, and go realizing, hey, you're taking this personally, you, you know, even though it's not personal. Because a lot, you know, to me, I'm a student of understanding hurt feelings, right? And when my feelings get hurt, I start to go and get interrogatory on myself and go, why? What caused me to get hurt feelings? Why am I angry? Why am I upset? What, something, there's something in my past. That's bitten me here in this trip, so what? And I take a look at myself and reevaluate and go, okay. This is what it is, and this is what I need to do.
And where would you put yourself on a political compass that you're standing?
Um, I am conservative libertarian mostly, I mean. You know, at the federal, provincial level, municipal level, none of that applies because it's about what the community needs. It's what the community wants, it's what the community has to get done. Those, that thinking has to step aside. You have to be willing to go and set, and put your ideology aside for the betterment of the community. You know, I mean, to me, I'm one of these people, it's like, I can do that, I can separate that thinking and saying, no, you mean. You know, I, I believe that everyone should be treated equally as a human being, doesn't matter what they are, or who they are, or what they believe, or. How they believe, or how they dress, or how they look, or what they say to you, treat them as a human being, you know?
And going back to transparency, uh, the first thing we put on your twenty twenty-two platform is uh, increasing transparency and accountability. How will you do that? How will you ensure that council remains transparent?
Well, the idea is that we, instead of going through, keeping a FOIA process that constantly costs time and money. Well, the idea is that we, instead of going through, keeping a FOIA process that constantly costs time and money. Is, it's like, okay, fine, you know, uh let's stop, they make, let's just put the information out there. Right, the council's doing this, this is what it's gonna cost, this is why we're doing it, and this is why it needs to be done. Let's stop playing, you know, uh games of keeping things, you know, under the radar, but just put it out there. You know, work with the newspaper and say, hey, this is what we're doing, right? You know, I'd love to see uh like the newspaper, you know, at least go to the meetings and be able to ask. Couple questions, you know, and get more, you know, get the mayor involved and having, you know, explaining what they're doing. You know, or something to be able to go and have more transparency that people can see, you know, in the news of what's going on in Merritt. I mean, one of the things I do notice is there's a lot of things happening, but not a lot of things are publicly talked about. You have to go to like the Merritt Wire or the this, that and another Facebook group to find out what's going on.
Oh, yeah, I know you will.
Right, instead of going, instead of, you know, like a community calendar from the city of all the groups that have something going on these days or. You know, with the newspaper even, you know, putting it online, you know, there's a lot of things that, you know, working together as a team. Is not just one thing over here, it's going to sing, hey, how can we get this group to go and work together with us? To go and help get more information out, you know, with the city, like Q one O one, you guys, you know, you have an online, you know, website. And a lot of people go to it, so it's like, the more that goes out about the city and what they're doing and why they're doing and yada, 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 makes it. So people go, oh, now I feel informed, right? And people want to be informed. They don't wanna be kept in the dark and. One of the things we noticed in federal provincial politics quite a bit is like to keep secrecy. You know, and I'm, you know, and secrecy breeds conspiracy, conspiracy breeds corruption. And I'm against all forms of corruption.
If you are elected, what changes will Merritt see? What changes, improvements under your leadership?
The biggest improvement as part of the council that we're gonna be have to work on is going to be water and sewer and the flooding issues. Those are the two highest priorities right now. I mean, the central use facility, it's down the road. Um buses will have to look at, you know, the gardening initiative is something we can do to help reduce. The amount of water that's being used for watering lawns. Um, that'd help the aquifer, it'd help us in the long run, you know, so I'm trying to figure out ways that we can go and get the community involved. You know, to help, you know, lower the amount of water we're using. Uh you know, there's a lot of things. There's little things like green bins is something I've heard that the city might be working on right now, but I'm not a hundred percent certain. I've heard that there could be a proposal in to go and get that done. Which green bins would then be going to our compost facility, which would upgrade your dirt, uh make possibly make better dirt that people would wanna buy. And generate some income so they can pay for itself. So there's all little things that we're all, you know, it's like, it's not just me, it's the team. And, you know, my ideas, a lot of these ideas could have to take a backseat for a while. And that's fine and dandy. You know, the community and the infrastructure has to come first. You know, these are high, the highest priority things that we have to deal with. You know, we're expanding and we have to look at what, you know, down the road. Of how far we're gonna have to expand and upgrade infrastructure. Because a lot of, you know, I've heard that in some places they're still using clay pipes. I don't know if it's true or not, however, I mean, it could be, I don't know. Right, but there's still, all of this needs to be upgraded, regardless of where, you know, uh people are, you know, living. You know, I mean, we tend to have a lot of our structure destroyed from the flood, so the city's taking on that and they're working on. You know, getting the funding to help with that as well and so on and so forth. So there's, there's a lot of things that need to be done. In this community, you know, and like I said, if my ideas sit on the back burner for years, that's fine. I mean, the community has to come first and what needs to be done has to be dealt with first. You know, that's the way it works.
So that being said, uh what what will you be bringing to the table that the other three candidates won't be able to, you think?
Um, I have the time to make the dedication. Um, I'm willing, you know, I can be. You know, I'm willing to work with a team and be, you know, to go and get things resolved. I mean, I know with the airport, we've, we're looking at. We're working on lights, it's part of the, it's part of the budget already, so it's like, those need to be installed. I don't know if they are yet, I haven't gone up there in a while. But these are things that are being worked on and what I'm willing to bring is, you know. That the community and their needs come first and my personal ideas and beliefs come second. And I'm willing to go and step back and say, my ideas can sit on the back burner until hell freezes over, until these issues are resolved. You know, that's has to be priority and it's not like bringing my personal agenda and ideas and saying, we gotta do this. Right, no, we have to resolve the issues at hand and those are more important than any other idea that, you know, I bring to the table. You know, and I'm going to work as a team to get these things done. I mean, if there's a two and a half minute meeting, I'll be there. If there's, you know, an emergency situation, I'll be there, you know, I mean, I don't care if I have to sleep on the floor, you know, in an emergency, I don't care. You know, if that's the way it is, that's the way it is. You know, so things, you know, the one of the reasons I was looking at the central use facility. Isn't the event of flooding? The center, because it was high enough off the ground, multiple stories, could be turned into an emergency shelter, shelter, place, location. And if there's other areas that are having emergency evacuations for fires and things like that, there would be a building that could be converted. You know, so between having the pool in the same building and the hockey arena, there'd be enough showers for people, right? So, and you know, and all, you know, weight training, et cetera. So there's, the idea of trying to solve these problems comes from multiple levels of thinking. And understanding that, well, this idea is a good idea, it may have to wait until this has to be dealt with first. But we have time curve with the current buildings that we currently have.
Uh so overall, why should Merittonians vote for you all in all?
Well, they should vote for me. Because I'm willing to give what it takes and I'm willing to work with a team that wants to get things done. I'm willing to put aside my ideas and take some ideas and say, hey, could we do this to help reduce water for the gardening idea? Could we help people get, you know, the proper sprinkling systems in and saying, hey, this is what we recommend, require. You know, for watering your lawns and so forth, so forth, to reduce the amount of water that's being used. Because water in the middle of the heat does no good, right? So a lot of people end up doing that, you know, in hot summer days. Because they say, you can water between five and seven in the evening or something, right? Which makes no logical sense. So it's kind of like, let's see if we can go say, okay, get a timer, have your lawn watered in the middle of the night. Right, or have your garden watered in the middle of the night and have it run all night so it can last the twenty four hours, right? So, and things like that. There's little things we can do. You know, and I'm willing to bring the ideas forward to help us because the aquifer is a big issue as well. You know, so, you know, there's multiple issues. And because I've taken the time and energy to actually understand the issues, I have taken. This initiative and saying, hey, we need to talk about these issues as well. So, I mean, and understanding the issues of what truly is going on in Merritt. Of, you know, with our infrastructure, with our taxation, with the costs, I mean, we might not be able to ever lower taxes, it might just keep going up. You know, I mean, at the time, I thought there would be a way to do it, you know, so like what I'm looking at and when I see, you know, lowering taxes is. Can be interpreted multiple ways of saying, if these facilities over here make enough money that they pay for themselves. We don't have to raise the taxes, but we can start going and putting that money away for infrastructure projects and keep the infrastructure projects going. Right, I mean, yeah, two hundreds, uh two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars is a lot of money for infrastructure. Goes quickly, but, you know, over two or three or four years, that money not coming out of our taxes, just that's one example. You know, five years is over a million dollars, right? So this is where, you know. In a way of not having to continually increase taxes by having these other uh amenities make the money, we would solve problems. So, I mean, I, you know, why they should elect me is because I understand what the issues truly are. I really do understand what the issues are. And when I see what's going on around the province where smaller communities, smaller than us, are starting to have serious infrastructure problems. And the smallest communities are looking at giving up, right? Communities under a thousand people are starting to look at, we just can't do this anymore. You know, let's just de-incorporate and be done. So it it's, understanding the issues is the key thing of my, of what I do.
Um, is there anything that you would like to say to Merittonians?
Sure, if you vote for me. I'm gonna be taking this job seriously. I'll be reading every piece of paper that's sent to me. I won't be coming unprepared to the meetings. I will be absolutely prepared and I will have questions. And I will want to take questions from people in the community to go and see if we can get answers. And get these, if there's a concern, you know, because I know a lot of people have concerns about crime in the community. And so on and so forth, but that's a very special issue that needs to be dealt with provincially. Unfortunately, we cannot do anything about the catch and release program that goes on. So we have to look at the local issues and only the issues we can deal with. We have the mayor fighting tooth and nail for our hospital. And I'm willing to stand behind, you know, beside the mayor, behind the mayor, wherever it takes to stand with him to say, hey. You guys at the provincial level are part of the problem here and you need to recognize. That sometimes being the solution is just getting out of the way, right? So I'm willing to stand with everybody to say, hey, this is a problem, it needs a solution and let's create a solution.
And my last question, I like to add, add, end all of my interviews with this question. What is a fun fact about yourself? Whether it be political, personal, city council, platform, campaign, just fun fact, any fun fact.
Well, I used to sing karaoke. I haven't been in over twenty years.
What's your go-to karaoke song?
Uh, The Gambler.
Kenny Rogers?
Kenny Rogers, The Gambler. It's a good song.
Well, thank you for your time, Mr. Phillips.